Welcome to the village board meeting for June 9th, 2021. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming to this meeting. Before we start with the agenda, I'd like to introduce David Wise, who is our labor specialist attorney.
Welcome.
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 So.
I would just say that at the PERMA conference, they had a short three-minute film about the Village of Wapinsers Falls Safety Committee, and it was really nice. It's really an outstanding award to get among the 500 communities that they ensure we came out on top and got the award, and that was very nice, very well done.
Okay, roll call clerk.
Mayor Serino.
Present.
Trustee Sedati.
Present.
Trustee Ponti.
Present.
Trustee Nesnick.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Ruffin.
Here.
Trustee Larisella.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
Village Attorney Wise.
Action on minutes, May 12th, the village board meeting of May 12th, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. May 24th, village board special meeting, a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make it.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. May 26th, 2021, village board special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Ruffin. Carried. Finance committee reviewed the bills.
Yes.
Finance. A motion to pay bills per the approved warrant.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First item up.
Mayor, I'm going to ask you if you can hold this over till after we have executive session, so we can discuss a few things and then come out of executive session and vote.
You want to do all three in executive session, or?
Um, at least two, so I don't know if you want to say the whole thing.
If you want to do all three, we can do all three.
It appears one is not conflictive, so is there a, is there a motion to hire Robert McDonough, a laborer for the weed do operator, that's the weed harvester, whatever?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second it.
And a second, fine.
Can you include in that motion that it's seasonal?
Yes.
Make that motion, the weed do operator's seasonal operation job on the lake from, I would say, from May, well, June of this year until middle of October.
How about, do you plan for him to start like maybe next Monday?
Yeah, he's on vacation right now, probably for a couple of days, so.
I didn't get, who seconded, did you second?
Okay, so from, uh, five days hence, so the 14th of June to the middle of October?
I would say, give or take.
Eighteen weeks?
Give or take, maybe.
Eighteen weeks max, fine. Is, now is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Kevin, he's just got to come fill out paperwork.
I'll get ahold, I see him on Saturday. I'll tell him to stop by in the morning. Thanks, Jess.
Next, bond resolutions?
Okay, there are four bond resolutions, and these bond resolutions already went through once to reduce the amounts that we're going to pay on bonds because of the interest rate change. You, you explain it.
So these are actually new bonds for larger equipment purchases that we've discussed during budget meetings and such like that. They're grouped separately because they're grouped by usage, by how, like their use of life, so there's four separate ones, and they add up to like a million one.
The first one is bond resolution dated June 9th, 2021, a resolution authorizing the issuance of $93,027 bonds of the Village of Wapinsers Falls, Dutchess County, New York, to pay for the cost of the purchase of a mini rescue vehicle.
Sorry, John, sorry, some of these are to cut interest off of some of the open leases that the village has.
Right. By the fire department in and said village. I need a, I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
That was Adam on the second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Sedati.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Larisella.
Aye.
How about me?
Mayor Serino.
Aye.
If you want to vote. You don't have to vote if you don't want to.
Super majority.
The second one is a resolution authorizing the issuance of $211,212 bonds of the Village of Wapinsers Falls, Dutchess County, New York, to pay for the cost of the acquisition of various equipment and software in and for said village. Need a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call. Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Sedati.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Larisella.
Aye.
The third one, a resolution authorizing the issuance of $215,053 bonds of the Village of Wapinsers Falls, Dutchess County, New York, to pay for the cost of the purchase of passenger vehicles for the use by the police department, fire, or building departments in and for said village, Village of Wapinsers Falls. Need a motion for that?
I'll make it.
Trustee Ponti.
I'll second it.
Trustee Larisella. Roll call. Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Sedati.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Larisella.
Aye.
Carried. The last one, fourth one, a resolution authorizing the issuance of $608,119 bonds for the Village of Wapinsers Falls, Dutchess County, to pay for the cost of acquisition of vehicles or equipment for construction, maintenance, or park purposes in and said village, Village of Wapinsers Falls.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Who made it?
Sedati.
Seconded by Ann Ponti.
Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Sedati.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Larisella.
Aye.
Carried. There is a resolution, 142021 of 2021, resolution authorizing release of security posted in connection with farm stores at Imperial Plaza.
Farm Stores is a business that just had a grand opening. It's in, to the side where the old car wash was, in Imperial Plaza, and so it's a drive-through, like convenient mark, you can buy food and drinks and I think shakes.
Pretty much everything.
Yeah.
I think they did a very nice job over there with the landscape, myself, I must say.
They did. It was a nice brand.
Okay.
Whereas, by resolution adopted by the Village of Wapinsers Falls Board of Trustees, March 10th, 2021, the village board accepted a performance bond secured by a cash deposit from ARB Legacy Development LLC, executed by Richard Barone and Angela Barone as members in the sum of $16,800 to secure the obligations of the applicants pursuant to the terms and conditions of the resolution of amended site plan approval for farm stores at Imperial Plaza, and whereas the applicants have completed all the improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the resolution of amended site plan approval for farm stores at Imperial Plaza to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer zoning administrator. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village board hereby acknowledges that the applicants have completed all the required improvements in accordance with the resolution of amended site plan approval for farm stores at Imperial Plaza, and hereby authorizes the release of the security posted in the amount of $16,800. Need a motion?
Who, which trustee will introduce this resolution?
I'll make it.
And which trustee will second it? Adam Larisella.
Roll call vote. Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Sedati.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Larisella.
Aye.
Carried. Resolution number 152021 of 2021, resolution authorizing the Village of Wapinsers Falls Police Department to enter into a contract with Power DMS. You haven't said anything?
We can let Commissioner Ferry say something on it, maybe?
Right, yeah. Power DMS is a, is a same record time and system for general orders manual. Our general orders manual is made up of more than 100 individual documents, and officers are responsible for knowing the content of those documents. Right now, those are kept in binders in the police station. We have two or three binders. They haven't been updated in 10 years, the majority of it hasn't been looked at with law changes and everything, and so what happens if you make a change, you have to take the old pages out, put the new pages in, depends on that getting done, and every one of those binders, and then depend on every officer going to read that. So what DMS does, and I used this in my previous job when I was chief of police, and excuse me, I need to see this area, what it does is it puts all that into the cloud. The first time around, we'll put the old document in there, the old manual, the officers will sign off on it, there's someone that's currently in place, and then as we change the section, they'll electrocute it, we sign it, and they'll have it available to them in phone apps and in their, in their car vehicles, so they'll always have access to the manual, so they'll know in any situation what they should be doing. So it's really important, it's very important for the department.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, will each officer go in, once the new system is in place, and read it all and get, get signed off on everything?
Yeah, supposedly they've done that already, so they'll sign off on the old manual automatically. Like I said, it's 100 documents, and anytime you make a change to any one of those sections, it'll automatically get, that one will be archived, the old one, the new section we put in place, they'll be able to look at them next to each other on a screen, see what was changed, and they'll sign off on it. We also have the ability to add multiple choice of filling questions on a test to make sure that they understand it.
I'm just concerned about the 10 years it wasn't maintained, if they're not up on...
Well, a lot of that is like stuff like, you know, chain command and things, the ones I'm worried about are say the pursuit policies and making arrests for violations of officers' presence, things that are...
But they'll have it all at their, their fingers.
We're going to focus on it right in the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Whereas, by resolution number 032021 of 2021, adopted by the village board of trustees on February 24th, 2021, the village board adopted the Village of Wapinsers Falls Police Reform and Reinvention Plan, and whereas, part of the Village of Wapinsers Falls Police Reform and Reinvention Plan was to improve transparency, training, education, policy review, and management, and overall public safety and community relations, and whereas, Power DMS is a cloud-based software that helps police departments reduce the cost of complexities of managing, updating, communicating, educating staff on new information with changes, and whereas, the Village of Wapinsers Falls Police Department is desirous to obtain the software and services and enter into a contract with Power DMS. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village board of trustees hereby authorize the Village of Wapinsers Falls Police Department to enter into a one-year contract for software and services with Power DMS, and authorizes the expenditure of $6,010.02 for said software and services, and be it further resolved that the village board of trustees hereby authorizes Commissioner Charles Ferry to execute the contract with Power DMS on behalf of the Village of Wapinsers Falls Police Department.
Do I have a trustee who will introduce this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Roll call clerk.
Mayor Serino.
Aye.
Trustee Huber.
Aye.
Trustee Sedati.
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Ponti.
Aye.
Trustee Larisella.
Aye.
Carried. Next is, on the agenda is this a discussion and an approval, hopefully, of a filming request, RICS, for June 25th?
Yep. Hello. Hi. Yeah, please just tell me, it's a whole meeting, so I apologize, but I talk too much.
Just see if that's on.
Yep. Maybe? Is it? Okay.
Ford, if you look at the handout I gave you here, and you flip to about third or fourth page, you'll see filming on Park Street. There are some questions and answers on that page.
I think that's a better location than East Main Street.
Yeah.
And there was, there's been quite a bit of dialogue going on between the police commissioner as well.
Yes.
So, and the village attorney?
Yeah, maybe you could just brief the village board on who you are, what you do, and how long you expect to be in the village filming?
Okay, so my name is Zori David Kova, and I'm location manager for a company called Choice Films. We have a project that starts June 14th, and it's going to continue in the Newburgh Beacon, Town of Wapinsers area, and Middletown for the next three weeks. We are looking to film one day in the area of Town of Wapinsers and Village of Wapinsers Falls. The scene that we want to film here is a, a driving scene. It's two characters in a car driving in a small town. The way we'll film it is we are going to have the car attached to a process trailer so that our actors don't have to actually drive the car. For that purpose, we'll need intermittent closing of traffic on both ends of Park Street, between Spring Street and North...
There, yeah.
Yeah. Just for safety purposes, the car will move with, you know, normal speed and follow the rules of the road. We would like to clear parking on both sides, because the way we'll film that is we're going to mount a hostess tray, which just holds the camera, but it just goes a little bit wider than the car, so, you know, if there's cars parked on the side, it can, you know, catch it. We are looking to be here maybe for three hours, between 2:00 to 2:30 till 5:00 to 5:30 in that window. In addition, we'd like to show a police car, which is a props car, go past the car with our main drivers. This is it.
Would that be a village police car? Would you be acknowledging that it's happening here in the village, or is this supposed to be happening somewhere else?
It's supposed to be happening in Massachusetts, yeah.
We can pretend, can't we?
I'm sorry?
We can pretend, can't we?
We could, we could. Well, there was a murder, so I don't know.
I know, I do.
Yeah.
Spoiler alert.
What movie is this? Where is it going to be?
It's called Redemption in Cherry Springs.
In Cherry Springs?
Redemption in Cherry Springs. It's supposed to take place in Massachusetts. It's a Hallmark movie that Choice Films, which is a production company, Newburgh, is servicing.
So to watch it, it'll be on?
Yeah, yeah, at some point. They make like 100 movies a year, so at some point it will be on Hallmark, yeah.
Will you let us know when?
I will, yeah, absolutely, I will. I think that it has a couple of the actors that are repeatedly on a lot of...
Yeah, they're like, all, all of them are in all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
I see here that Commissioner Ferry had some financial considerations for the village to look at. I don't know if there were any beyond that.
Yeah, if there's any questions for the applicant, what I was going to have Commissioner Ferry do is, is to brief the board on what needs to be done on his end. When we go into executive session, we could discuss a permit fee, come out, you could vote on the permit fee, and we'll let you know what the permit fee would be.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. On, on, on the, the village side, I think I spoke briefly to, to Ferry about the, the parking signs being placed, the no parking signs by the, I think, his, his authority, and we can, we can distribute filming signs, and we have a template that I can send about, like, you know, we'll be in your neighborhood, and we'll be filming this time to that time, and, you know, if there are any questions, it's usually my number, so people can follow that.
Commissioner Ferry is right there.
Oh, hello. Hi, nice to see you person. Yeah, awesome. So yeah, so we went back and forth about the new no parking signs and, and, you know, the cars on the side, yeah.
Okay, good.
Does Commissioner Ferry want to make any comment?
Well, I hadn't discussed the fees, I don't know if you want, like the fee that I put on that memo?
Yeah, we have the memo here.
I think you may want to look at some additional fees if you want to discuss in the executive session, as I was saying.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about that, but has anything that was sent by the applicant changed your recommendation?
No.
All right, so it's, that needs to be discussed, since it's going to be a semi-contract, it's a...
Sure.
When we come out, there'll be a, and I don't know if you want to wait around for that, but executive session is a seat, it's like closed doors.
Okay.
And, you know, if you leave your number, the clerk can, can give you a call and let you know.
Sure.
Okay, or we can email you.
I have all of that, so I'll let you know in the morning.
Sure, perfect.
All right?
Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
You can email it.
There you go.
Next item is an approval for the 72nd Annual Festival of the Arts on 5/14/22, and the 73rd Festival of the Arts on 5/13/23.
I'll make that motion there.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. There's a request from Wapinsers Falls Business and Professional Association. They're having June luncheon, Thursday, June 10th, 2021. Luncheon is being held outdoors at Patsy's Pizzeria. They would like to request that Reservoir Place be temporarily closed at the east main entrance from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. as a safety precaution. Anybody object to that?
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Who could, just for the sake, I, I don't disagree with it at all. I would just like to hear what the concern is, really for, from, for benefit of planning. You wouldn't mind?
My concern was, is that, you know, we have a large group luncheon coming in, and if that access road to the back there is open, people would be driving through, and they have waiters coming out of Patsy's to come over and...
So just the obvious?
Yeah, just the obvious, and I had a conversation with Commissioner Ferry about it, and we threw around some ideas, and, and this is what I thought would, would be the best option for us to go with, and he agrees with me, so we both felt we should bring it to the board for approval.
Now, are you talking about just a sign to close it, or is this going to be...
No, we'll probably put a, I would think we put a barricade across.
Just a barricade, so it's not going to be manned by an officer or anything like that?
No.
I can get ahold of Pete. We can put a barricade up there tomorrow, this, this for tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just need a minute, we just have a little conversation.
Can we just talk for a minute?
What are we doing?
We're just talking about...
They're having a sidebar.
What did you say?
It's just something we have to be careful of. We're done.
Okay?
We're just discussing future implications, so, so it doesn't seem inappropriate. We're discussing the future implications of what that means by finding the need to close the road on, for a certain occasion, when that parcel functions ordinarily in such a capacity, and we are not doing that. So it's something to think about.
Well, it's not really out of the...
Is what we were talking about. No, just so everyone understands what the side conversation was.
I mean, it's not unusual, Mark, Market Street used to have a block party, and we closed them.
No, 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 but that parcel is functioning currently as we're sitting there, the way it's going to function the day of that event. Do you understand what I'm saying? So moving forward...
Is what my concern is.
Yeah, I don't disagree with your concern, I support it completely. It's just a conversation we've been having in general, because that's a dangerous proposal. So don't, don't take our, my conversation as disagreeing with you at all.
No, I, I understood that too, you know, I mean, but, you know, I, I don't think you're setting a huge precedent by closing it off for the three hours.
No, that's not, it's just based on a conversation we've been having about the usage.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I made the motion there.
I'll second it.
Ann Ponti seconded it.
Okay, I'll third it.
Yes, it's carried.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. We have a resignation of resignation... We have a resignation of, resignation of Police Officer Chris Fury, effective 5/30/2021. Motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have S.W. Johnson Company voted in Andrew Doherty as an active member.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. W.T. Garner Engine Company voted in Tracy Mike and Edward Petrov as members of the company and department.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have monthly reports. Our grant writer was out today, sick. Did he by chance advance a report to you? Okay, so, we'll have to get this report in paper form, or he can do it two weeks hence. Finance trustee Lorisella.
Well, we met with the treasurer, and this is a bit of housekeeping to reconcile, make sense of monies that, you know, were being used.
Clean up last year's project?
Last year. Trustee Ruffin and Niznik and I sat and discussed certain things, broke down some things, and saw that everything made sense, and it was in the board's best interest to outline these things and make them, put them in the official record.
Need a motion.
Yep.
I'll make the motion.
Jen, you seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Sadadi, Highway.
Yeah, we've been continuing our brush cleanup. They've been doing asphalt pavement repairs on several roads. They're gonna be finishing up what they're doing there and starting sidewalks next week. Some sidewalk repairs throughout the village. That's all.
Mm-hmm. Fire in Lake, trustee Uber.
Yep, the fire department had fifteen calls for the month. We had a meeting Monday. The new sixty-eight twelve should be in by mid-July, and we had a, Mike, we had a, Mike Ruffin was with us from the finance committee, and we're looking to move some money around from one line to another, so I guess they gotta have a meeting about that. Mike has all the information.
So, I guess you will need the meeting.
Yeah, we will need that meeting. Due to underfunding, what we believe to be underfunding in the maintenance line of the firehouse budget, we had discussed at the fire committee meeting to, we'd previously approved eight thousand dollars to paint the fire bay at the S.W. Johnson Firehouse. We're looking to actually not paint and to move that money back into the maintenance budget, because there was an incident where the ladder truck just needed repair, and that bill came in at about ninety-three hundred dollars. Kevin?
Excuse me?
It's about ninety-three hundred?
Something like, I think it was something like that.
Yeah, it was real, real close to ninety-three hundred dollars, which looks like it's gonna leave a shortfall in the fire department's maintenance budget for the year, so just being proactive. You know, we had that meeting, we discussed it with Jason Ensign and Mike at the firehouse about, you know, again, taking, well, postponing the painting, which we previously approved for eight thousand dollars, and putting that money back into the equipment maintenance, so we can just move some money around there.
Good job, I think that's why.
You gotta, you gotta find the money somewhere on a shoestring budget.
All right, and I'll finish up with the lake. We have our lake meeting next week. I'd like to thank the board for hiring somebody for the weed boat, and I think we're gonna get a lot of stuff done on the lake this year. That's all I have.
Okay. Safety alert.
Okay, we're gonna have our initial meeting in two weeks again, not our initial meeting, but resume our meetings again that we had before COVID hit, and we're gonna pick a location, one of the buildings to go through, and make sure we're still in compliance. The safety issue that was pointed out to me is there is debris laying around our parks. It's not only unsightly, but some of it could be dangerous.
Some wasn't.
Needles, things like that. I don't know how to move forward with this. We don't have a designated person at the moment to go around and check the parks for debris, trash, stuff like that.
I think we should talk about that in executive session.
Well, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Talk about the other thing.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can come to this.
Executive.
While you're on that subject, Commissioner Ferry, could we have some patrol down in Vets Park at night? There's been some activity going on down there.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty busy.
Yeah, I'm sure that they're patrolling there, but I don't know if you can tell me later what the activity is.
Yeah, the kids are back up on the roof, and it's just, I don't know, unsafe to be up there.
Okay.
Maybe take a walk through, like, not only drive around, but walk?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Yes, I got, she's ready for recreation on the same.
Not yet, not yet. We got a safety issue. We have our, as everyone knows, we have West Main Street, the sidewalk, that has not been a sidewalk for since last September, and that constitutes a safety issue, at least in my mind.
Mine too.
And as part of my duties, I attended a meeting with Central Hudson and DOT, as did the attorney, and as did our village engineer, and they were talking about technical aspects of this project, and they do not consider it an emergency, Central Hudson and even DOT, so far. And so, we are led to believe that it's not going to be taken care of for at least until February, March, maybe April of next year.
I kinda disagree, because...
Disagree that it's not an emergency?
Yes, because there was an automobile accident a few weeks ago, and there was a curb that contact put up to block the water from going down into the hole. So, it wouldn't wash away that sidewalk. That sidewalk's gonna wash away, and that road's gonna wash away, and our wall's gonna fall apart even more.
With all due respect, all of us in this room could say it's a safety hazard, but, but, they're not deeming it a safety hazard.
Because it's not near town.
Maybe that's true. Doesn't affect them, but it affects, it affects a lot of people, plus with county players opening up, it's gonna affect more people.
There'd be a collars on that street, and that thing would've been done.
So, I'm just bringing that up so that the public is aware of this, that's all.
Yeah, Mayor, have we made any progress, and maybe this is for you, Attorney Wallace, but we had talked about the idea of crafting a public statement to let them know, to let the people know, you know, what effect is happening, and now with this new information, are we gonna move forward on that? Have we done any work toward that?
Yeah, remind, remind me tomorrow.
Well, we have our engineer who has done a timeline, okay, so...
Well, there could be different levels of the communication, but unless you happen to be catching this, or you talk to one of the, one of the folks here, is talking to someone and putting it out there, but it just feels like if we don't really get ahead of this and let the people who live here and visit here and work here know what has happened, where we're at, on some level, we should try to do it soon.
Oh, don't worry, they'll be, they'll be...
Thank you.
They'll be knowing about something about this.
Okay, I appreciate it, just wanna stay on top of it.
Mayor, can I say one thing on that?
Pardon?
Can I say one thing on that West Main Street?
Uh, yeah, sure. Do you wanna do it now or in the public input?
I just wanted to make a statement about the school buses in West Main Street.
Okay.
Do I make that now?
Make it.
You know, the schools have been on a wash-down schedule recently, so it hasn't been a problem with buses. There's a school bus stop right there, and there's a lot of kids there. They could let out that bus, they literally walk up the street to get past that rule, so putting it forward to February is gonna be a big statement, and this September it should be back tomorrow there, because the bus is gonna be...
I only use February because I think they're looking to go out to Big in February, maybe March, and I thought, I heard them say, a six to eight week timeframe for completion in the meeting.
To answer, here's what, when we, when the mayor expressed his concerns, or our village engineer about that particular crosswalk to the county players, the DOT's response was, it is going to be inconvenient for the public to have to go across the street and then, you know, back and forth, and I would think that based on that way of thinking, with respect to that answer, he would probably say the same thing regarding the buses, you know, may, he would, they would probably recommend that a new stop or a different stop, the, you know...
Well, he, DOT and Central Hudson, they alluded to the fact that it's a good thing county players is on the side, that the whole sidewalk is open. That's, that's basically what they said.
I still don't understand why we can't have a bridge there. You go down to New York City, you see iron plates wherever there's a hole, and people can walk across them. This is, this is, I seen a woman up there with a stroller going out around it into the street to get back up to the other side.
Clerk Corg, I did call and speak with Nancy from KC Engineering, asked her that very specific thing, and if we could put any, whether it's steel or wood, and her, what she stated was that we have been, the village has been instructed that they cannot put any weight whatsoever over there. I don't really necessarily think that that makes any sense, I'm obviously not an engineer, but, that, because I, because I would've liked to, I spoke with Attorney Wallace, he suggested I call, and that, that's the official story, you know, though it might not make any sense, I don't know what else we can do unless we can...
A lightweight aluminum?
I agree a hundred percent. I mean, the bridge isn't, technically, I mean, as I understand it, you wouldn't put the weight on this, that's the point of the bridge, you put the weight prior to the, to the...
That's not a reason.
To the breach, and then post, that's why it's a bridge, otherwise, it wouldn't be a bridge, right?
That's not a reason, that's an excuse.
Right, well, I'm just telling you what they said.
I appreciate that.
It's...
I'm just thinking from a safety point of view.
I agree.
I'm gonna make some phone calls. Senators.
Mayor.
Assemblywoman.
Yes.
Mayor, would it be of help to the village if I was to have the business association take a very proactive, having our business owners contact our, you know, local representation of the state and everything, hit the DOT, I mean, I can draw up a form letter that I can run by your approval if you want, and then have a mass mailing go out from all of our business owners up that way, as well as the association, anybody else that I can get to support that? Maybe sometimes when you just rattle people's phones, it gives things...
As long as we review the letter first, whatever.
Okay, we'll have that drafted, and then I'll get it over to Craig to take a look at.
They can do whatever they want, we don't say...
Right.
Concerned citizens, so.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Fine. Water?
Recreation.
Oh, excuse me, for recreation?
I'd like to say two things about that. The planters that the village had downtown in the business district last year, I believe there were ten of them, are now, they're, we have twelve of them, and I approached ten merchants so far on both East and West Main Street, one on Market and one on Mill, that if they would water them and fertilize them, they could have them, and they very willingly took them. The reason there's only ten out there right now is because I had to have two more that are being made, and I'm sure I'll have a spot for them as well. So, that was a huge plus for us, and I like to thank those merchants, when I get them all, twelve out there, for doing that for us. The other thing is, if you drive down through the village, you'll see the banners, the hometown hero banners are up, the first shot are up, and they look good, and we knew that as soon as they went up, we would get bombarded, and I've been getting at a rate of three to four a day since, so that's a huge plus, and special thanks to the team that put that together. It was a joint effort between the village and the American Legion. American Legion kicked it off, that's my organization, I was part of that, actually, I'm part of both, the American Legion and the village, as part of this process. Cindy Latino, very, very active in getting those up, I'd like to thank you for that effort that you're doing, that's huge. Frank, two Franks, from Frank Locato and Frank Steinbach from the American Legion, myself, and George Hemroff from the, the other VFW, were very instrumental in getting that up. They put them up as they said they would before Memorial Day, and they got them up, I think, the day before in the downpour rain. We had a contractor do that for us, our highway's not equipped to be able to do that, so we hired a contractor to do it, and they were out there quite a while, I think, five hours, I think, I heard that in the, I heard that they were wet, they were soaked.
Very wet.
Commissioner Ferry, was that also?
I would, I would add to that, that Commissioner Ferry and Danielle Masterson were out in the pouring rain for at least the better part of four and a half hours or so.
I was gonna say Danielle especially in the place.
Maybe four, six hours, Charlie?
Too long.
Too long, right?
So, special thanks to everyone for all that they did to get them up. We're in phase two, they'll be up by the Fourth of July, hopefully, and then we'll go into phase three, and the applications are still coming in. The village, yeah.
If I can just add something, the town of Wapungia has eleven banners. We, at this point in time, have sixty-two banners.
Yeah. The village of Wapungia Falls, one square mile, sent a lot, a lot of young folks into battle in World War II, a lot. We got some from as early as World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, of course, and I think there's one or two even from some recent conflicts are up there, so...
We have, I think we have at least one, maybe two, that are on active duty right now.
Some KIA's, and we had Purple Hearts, a lot, it was really great to see that. Thank you.
Water? Kevin?
Water? Want me to do it, or you gonna do it?
You can do it, I can add.
Yeah, well, we were talking, still talking about our water filtration plant, we're, I think, getting somewhere, it's almost, maybe. Been a process of finding funds, and it's already late, touched on this month, touched on it for two hours. Am I correct?
That's true. The issue with this is we need to filtrate out... The issue with this is, we need to filtrate out the manganese and the iron out of our water, and we're on one well, and it's crept into that well. So, the discussion point is, now we, two offers, two, option A and option B, on how to rectify the water issue. Trustee Uber is correct, to the extent of the financing, but we're beyond that now. They, the water department has to decide which option to pursue. We can't drag our feet on this because we are on one well with minerals creeping into the water, so we, they have to decide on which option to take. And so hopefully, hopefully shortly, they will make that decision, and then we will decide how we're gonna pay for it. But there's no doubt, they have to do something. So, that's all I'll add to that. Trustee Niznick, first now?
We've collected all our applications for the highway position that was posted, we'll be holding interviews starting next week, and hopefully make a decision from there.
You know, I was wondering, and I don't, I don't know if this is something that is appropriate to talk at the board meetings, if it's not, just let me know, but I was wondering in the, in the case of the highway department versus like the police department, why are we not having the highway, highway department, like Pete Pajci hired me?
He's, well.
And the only reason why I ask that is because.
I agree.
I'm not totally sure of really the roles, like after I did the first, you know, I know how to hire people, I've hired them for many different jobs, but when it comes to this type of position, I just was curious.
So Pete has already received all the applications, and he's already reviewed them, and he'll be coming to us with his recommendation?
No, no, I get that, but like Commissioner Ferry, who happens to be here, he doesn't, we don't hire the police.
Yeah, we do.
But we don't interview, right? They, they kind of.
I think, like I would recommend somebody to be hired, but you would approve it?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
We do all the interviews in-house, unless it's for.
Well, that's, right, you do all the interviews in-house, right?
Something like that, like I hire a rank, you would probably.
Okay, well, it just was really a curiosity because it seemed similar, you do the interviews, we're interviewing that department, it just seemed.
I think it should be that way, personally, myself.
I don't have a problem doing it, I just was thinking, it was a kind of job where I'm not a highway, it seems we put him in charge of running the department, and then we're.
You could bring the department head into your interviews.
And we've done that before.
Honest question, just a question.
We have done that before, Pete has been involved in some of the interviews, but he definitely does go through the application.
Yeah, no, no, you had mentioned that, I do, I do not think that he's not involved in the process, I just was kind of almost like curious as to why we even are. It's like you're the head of the department, find your guy, hire your guy, bring it to us, maybe we have the final say, because that's the way it functions, but it seemed like a, an obstacle of micromanaging when we're saying, you're the guy, you're our guy, we're putting you in charge, but we're gonna tell you who the person should work for you.
I, you know.
And I don't mean it in like a negative way.
No, just coming off my own personal experience, I work for a company, and I'm a department manager for that company, and I have a lot of input as to who gets hired in that department, but it's not my ultimate decision. It's, there's people above me, there's people that have things to consider, so they have to look at the whole view of everything that's going on, they, I'm pulled into interviews, I definitely have my input as to what happens, but I'm not the final say.
That's fair enough.
And I think that's the same situation that we have.
Okay, that's fair enough. I just was thinking when the, when the work is, it's different if we're doing like a rec person, you know, or something like, I don't know the scope of their work, but that makes sense, that's, I just wanted, I just was asking. Cool?
Sewer, we had a tri-municipal meeting, first Thursday of the month.
Sorry. Wake up.
Down at the, well, it was a Zoom meeting, I think they're gonna be short-lived moving forward, but I, when, when they go into open session there for meetings, I would urge any board member to take a tour down at the sewer treatment plant, it's off of Sheaf Road, sits on the Hudson River, and it's been there since nineteen eighty-seven. And you'll be astounded, and then you could take the map that shows how it arrives at the sewer treatment plant, it's interesting. And before closing, I would say, I had a lot of meetings this month, like I said, the grand opening, I was at our Memorial Day ceremony, as was a few of the board members, I was at the town of Wapager ceremony, nice ceremony, I was encouraged by the turnout at our ceremony, and the town had a good turnout likewise. And I would like to thank Danielle Masterson for doing the twenty-four hour taps every hour on the hour, and at the Mizzier Homestead and the gazebo, that was a long day for her. So, and I thank some board members who contributed with some goodies there. With that said, anybody, before we move to executive session, a question?
I got one, Mayor, before, if I can jump in, Paul, real quick. I got a message from a resident up on Main Street, West Main, Mr. Viscusi, maybe Craig can help us out with this one, with Central Hudson, with the easement through that property for their gas line, that station they put in there.
Gas regulator.
Gas regulator, it's pretty loud for the resident, the resident can hear it inside his house, is there any way we can get a hold of Central Hudson and have them soundproof that box, box it in, or do something for this resident?
Yeah, okay, I'll get you in touch with them.
Appreciate that, thank you.
With the representative I've been working with, he's the right of way, but I'm sure he can get us in touch with the community liaison.
All right. Is this gonna be a problem?
I would, I would just ask that you just pass that along to Mr. Viscusi, and then they can have that conversation with him directly.
He called.
He called.
I got the same call.
Yeah, he called, he called Central Hudson, and Central Hudson told him it's gonna be louder in the winter time. I don't think it's fair for the resident to hear their product running through the pipes. It is an hour rivalry, so it's not their land, it's ours, you can be give it to them.
Okay, what is it that they're hearing, just, just from my own understanding?
They put a gas regulator station in West Main, because there was two lines, one bigger than the other, and they combined them to one.
So they, so you hear like a mechanical?
Yeah.
It's like the, the volume of the gas flowing through, like the loud hissing noise?
Oh, wow.
Yes.
It is loud. It is loud. Is there anything, can we do something about that?
We as a village?
Well, yeah, I assume we allow them to.
Well, I mean, it's a public utility, it's, they have the right to, you know, for the public good to put that, that particular apparatus in that right of way.
And they, but do they have like a requirement for quiet enjoyment of the people around them, or?
Well, it serves two hundred households, this particular gas regulator, unfortunately, I don't know if they could guarantee that.
What is it, above, above the roof?
Above the ground.
They need to just put it and close it with something.
Close it in with like a box or something, yeah. We had a lengthy conversation, and they were willing to, they are willing, they put a fence up, and they're supposed to put screenage up so you can't, the resident can't see it from his house.
Is that?
Is there anything about it, or is that the point?
I personally think it's in the wrong location, myself, in the right of way. If it was a hundred feet further up the road, it would be next to, it would be next door to it would be the water department property, and it would be, you know, seventy-five, eighty feet away from his back property line.
When was that installed?
Oh, just recently.
Did that go to planning?
No, it's a utility.
Yeah, but Verizon is a, I mean, I understand it's a different type of utility. Well, Verizon would, would go, used to go to planning. I'm just saying, because if that went to planning, the planning board members would have advocated for the residents and suggested that they, they have proper screenage before they even did it, that they put, that they put, we, you know, Mr. Ruffin here, he would have been right on top of it.
Especially the noise levels, yeah.
Yeah, the noise, I'm just surprised that they didn't go to planning.
I don't recall them saying any noise level, and I had some concerns about that, because I, the one who brought up about screenage.
No, but they would have been asked at planning, so I think it's unfortunate, and we should, we should have a policy in place where even though it's a utility, they should have to go, just like the other utilities, they should have to go to planning.
They can fix their sidewalk, they can put a box around the regulator.
Any other questions? Yes.
Now, I was just wondering if the board could explain the decision to cancel summer camp for the kids in the village of Wapagers, the reasoning behind it.
Well, I think at the time, we were planning to move forward, and then one of the towns canceled because of the spike in the COVIDs.
All of the towns around us are all having camp, and not only summer camps, they're also having athletic camps, we're really the only one that is not.
But they weren't when we made the decision.
That's correct.
That was part of, that.
But they are.
Okay, but that was, that, you're asking why we canceled it, that was one of the main things, so maybe the question is why we not reinstated it, but we can't, that was one, that was the primary reason, was we were taking a cue from one of the towns that, you know, has part of the village, and we were unsure, there was some real concern about, apparently there's some processes in place, that if one person gets it, what happens? I mean, maybe the attorney can, can speak to it, because we were concerned about liability, how does it function if someone does get sick? I mean, I will tell you that it was, when we made that determination, which I don't know how many weeks ago it was, four, six, eight weeks ago, was significantly different than the climate that we're living in right now.
Absolutely.
So.
No question.
The simple answer is, that's why we did it. Why did we not reinstate it? That might be a separate question, that's really your question, because I didn't even know Poughkeepsie is back open to having camp, I didn't even know.
They are, and again, they're doing sports camps, they got their community centers open for both adults and children, we're really the only ones that, that I know of.
Interesting, I didn't know.
At that particular point, too, it wasn't in the budget, so we had decided not to do it, it wasn't in the budget, so it would have been, it would have been hard for us to reverse that.
So how much, how much do you actually think it cost out, I mean, what was the net cost in two thousand nineteen to the taxpayer, to the village?
Well, you sent it to me, Cindy, it was about eighteen, eighteen to twenty-nine.
No, that was the total.
No, net cost, net cost.
We, we charged fees, so that offset those costs, we could have adjusted the fees to cover what, you know.
Like he just said, we didn't even know Poughkeepsie went back to it.
I think the primary concern was the COVID, that, that really, that's my.
Okay, because, I mean, if it was a cost, the net cost was twenty-five hundred dollars for forty kids.
All I'm saying is, Poughkeepsie went back to it, just exactly what Adam just said, but one of the, what I'm trying to say, one of the considerations at that particular time would have been cost, because our budget was already done.
So at twenty-five hundred dollars for seven weeks, with forty kids, an average of forty kids per week?
We didn't, we didn't know, we, there was a lot of unsureness, what could have happened, with parents being afraid to send their kids to camp, but we hired camp directors to service what we thought might come, bottom line is, we canceled the program for this year, it was a different climate back when we did it, and we're making steps to move forward with that, we have on the agenda tonight, which we're going into executive session, to increase our recreation department, and we're hoping to have, to have great things out of that. So that's all I can say going forward.
We didn't very, really discuss budget very much, though, because we, we, you know, there were people that thought we should do it, people that, on the board, that thought we should do it, people that thought we shouldn't, once Poughkeepsie made their statement, their announcement that they didn't do it, I mean, there is a sense that, you know, this is the most bizarre time we're living in.
No question.
And so like, how do you know what you're, you know, I happen to be more relaxed about certain things, other people are less relaxed, and so it's like, you're trying to make a decision about, you know, I have kids, but I see how some parents interact with the world versus other parents, and it's like, how do you make the correct decision? We had some met.
Well, you go by the science, right?
Right, and some of the, right, and so.
And that's what the state was telling us, that it was okay to open up for camp.
Well, I don't know, because then when, when other individuals were talking to their primary physicians, nurses they knew and stuff, people were saying, I wouldn't do it. So, you know, that's just the truth of it all, and there was no, like, you know, Grinch that stole summer camp, it was just like, what do we do, let's make the right decision. It would have been interesting, this is the first I knew that Poughkeepsie even started again, that might have been interesting when it happened.
Yeah, they're, they're sold, they're sold out, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, our kids can't even get in, our kids that are in the town of Poughkeepsie, part of the village, they can't even get in because they're maxed out, as is the town of Wapagers.
It's crazy.
If I can, you know, just say one more thing, too, is, I would have appreciated, as being the camp director, the opportunity to sit down and have a little bit more input into your decisions, I really wasn't afforded that much of an opportunity to sit down and tell you how I felt we could have done it safely, how we could have done it cost effectively, so I was disappointed from that perspective, so I would just say, maybe for the future, that, you discussed, you know, the idea of that, you know, Pete should be more involved in terms of, you know, hiring labors for the highway department, I think when you put somebody in place to be a camp director, whose responsibility was to get it permitted, and to be very clear about, could we operate or could we not operate, I think I just should have been afforded the opportunity to sit down and have a conversation with you. The prior year, when COVID was rampant, and they were just starting to lift some things as far as whether or not we could have camp, I did sit down with the previous board, I had a trustee from, you know, each of the wards, and we had a frank conversation about, could I open up camp safely? I can't even begin to explain to you the hours that I put into tracking, you know, how could we do camp safely, you know, could we do it? And I was very honest with, I think Kevin, Kevin, you can attest to it, that I basically said to them at that point in time, could we do it? Yes, I, you know, I had the protocols all in place, did I think it would have been fun in two thousand and nineteen? Absolutely not, I didn't, with all of the distancing that would have had to do with kids and masks and stuff, it would have made it a very uncomfortable situation for kids that summer. However, this summer, I was fairly comfortable, and I think I, you know, those people that I did speak to, I made it very clear that I thought we could very, very comfortably open up summer camp. And, you know, I'm really disappointed, because, you know, we do have a population in the village of youth that really don't have the ability to be, get transportation out to Marshfield or up to Greenville, that the two, you know, towns operate their camps at, so I think it's a big disappointment to those families not to be able to take advantage of that. We were lucky enough last year, or, I'm sorry, back in two thousand, I'm getting my, two thousand nineteen, to be able to qualify to receive funding from Dutchess County for children that were of low income, and capture childcare fees for them, so that their summer camp costs were covered by that. So I think that that's, you know, something that we should be proud of, because we did have eleven kids that were able to take advantage of that, and not have to pay fees for camp and stuff. and not have to pay fees for camp and stuff. So, you know, for future, I mean, that, I'm just being frank with you to say that if, I think you, you know, if you put somebody in the position of, you know, being the director of the camp and giving you advice, can we do it? How do we do it? Um, you know, I think you should have afforded me more of an opportunity to just have a conversation.
I'm sorry. I will say though, in in the board's defense, at at the point that the reorganization came along, you were not the head of camp. We hadn't done that. We hadn't put you in charge.
Uh, technically I was because I was appointed back in fall.
Okay, well, I, I'm just saying so otherwise I would have, you know, maybe we would have, but I don't think anyone was seeing that, am I right?
I, I don't know what date that was.
I just want to make a correction. I think, I think you meant two thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty, not two thousand nineteen. Getting my dates mixed up.
See, the thing that's just that for me, and maybe it's because I was a teacher for forty years. Our kids, and I'm sure you guys know this, have had not only a lot of physical strain being isolated away from their compadres in school for a lot of this year, but the mental strain that it's taken. I've been in close contact with a lot of my teacher friends and they're seeing reactions from kids that they've never seen before. And I thought that it was going to be critical that they be able to interact again, our kids in the village, with other kids again because they've been isolated so much. And that's why I think it's, one of the reasons why I think it's really sad that we're not doing it.
Agreed.
Okay. With that said, uh, need a motion to go to executive session? Oh, hold on.
I just wanted to, you're going into executive session uh for hiring recreation?
For a discussion of personnel issues. That's correct.
Okay.
And some litigation. Thank you.
What, is it bad? Should we hear more about?
I mean, you have it on here.
You're gonna be coming out of.
Yeah, we're gonna come out of it and then go back to, there's certain things we can't dis, we're not.
I know, I know. I've been around one time. I I I understand.
Well, I didn't know why you were.
Can't discuss personnel. I know, I know that. I know.
Well, we're gonna come back and talk about it. Right?
Yes.
Possible motion.
So I need a motion uh
What time?
To adjourn into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And a second.
Two seconds.
Adam?
Whoever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.